Welcome everyone to the February 28th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd also like to announce too, after the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could stand, remain standing for a moment of silence for a longtime volunteer of the VAC's passing, Mr. Ralph Reagan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It all remains standing, please. Thank you all very much. Before the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held a workshop at 6:30 where we discussed upcoming dolphin property projects. We also once again spoke about updating our audio system here, spoke about speed bumps possibly going in in a couple areas within the township. We had spoke about a scholarship fund through our Veterans Advisory Council, a vacancy on the Veterans Advisory Council. We spoke about up and coming ordinances. We spoke about line item number two, which is the resignation of Ms. Susan Cummins, one of our board members. We discussed an email sent to us by Ms. Lanny Roscoe, grant availability Mr. Galdo had spoke up, spoke about. And Mr. Ottinger also brought up Act 172, which is a volunteer tax credit program. So I would also like to announce that our board solicitor, Mr. Frank Dillon, is not here tonight. And Mr. Tracy Hunt, sitting to my right from Beggar, Carlin, and Mandio, one of the colleagues of Mr. Dillon, is here tonight to cover him. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt for being here, we appreciate it. And also our Public Works Director, Mr. Rich Coppins, feeling a little under the weather tonight, so he won't be here. Mr. Coppins, if you're watching, hope you get well very, very soon. On our agenda tonight, we have two proclamations. Unfortunately, Mrs. Cummins couldn't be here tonight, so we will be holding that off to a later date. We will be recognizing though, two incredible individuals tonight, Bob and Elaine Sterner. Bob and Elaine have lived in the Oakford section of Lower Southampton Township for as long as I've known, and which has been a very long time. Through all of Bob and Elaine's ups and downs in their own life, they've touched the lives of countless number of children, my children being included in that. With their 30-plus years of involvement, volunteering their time with our Lower Southampton Athletic Association, we as a board could not think of two more deserving people that have given their lifetime of dedication and love to the children of Lower Southampton. Mr. Castle, sir, would you do the honor in reading the proclamation for the Sterner family?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation, resolution 2024-11, Bob and Elaine. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the county of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton does hereby resolve as follows. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is always pleased to acknowledge individuals who through their dedication, civic endeavors, and generosity contribute to the well-being of all the people of this township. And whereas Bob and Elaine Sterner are being honored for their years of dedication to the residents in this township. And whereas Bob volunteered as a coach for GALS and LSAA softball from 1993 to 2023. Bob also served in field maintenance and is an umpire. Bob helped install the fundamental field at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. Bob volunteered as a coach for LSAA girls' travel soccer and in-house soccer from 1994 to 2023. Bob also served in field maintenance and as a referee. And whereas Elaine volunteered as a coach for LSAA soccer from 1994 to 2021. Elaine volunteered as a coach for softball from 1993 to 2022, for all age groups from fundamentals to 18 and under. Elaine also ran the snack stand at Russell Elliott Park from 1994 until 1991. Elaine was a Girl Scouts leader from 1991 until 1994. And whereas Bob and Elaine started the Micro Soccer League in 1999 with 18 players on four teams at Pecressing, using temporary cone fields on Saturday mornings. The program has grown to over 80 players on eight teams. And whereas Bob served as an LSAA Soccer Vice President from 1998 until 2005, and served as LSAA President from 2018 until 2023. In 1999, Bob began his service on the Inter-County Soccer League Board of Directors and served as a President since 2015. We can't thank you guys enough. Whereas Bob and Elaine have been married for 41 years and have lived in Feasterville for 37 years. They have three children, Emily, Erin, and Alyssa, and seven grandchildren, Grant, Arista, Colston, Jamison, Harley, Bobby, and Louis. And now therefore do we, the Board of Supervisors of Lower Southampton Township, it is our desire to honor you two, Bob and Elaine Sterner. We congratulate you on your accomplishments with LSAA and express our sincere thank you for all of your excellent work within our community. This will be adopted by at least the majority, and I'm sure a majority, of the board, of the members of the Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised public meeting of the township on the 28th day of February 2024, at which a quorum was present.
Present. At this time, do I have a motion as read by Mr. Castle? Mr. Chairman? Oh, we have people fighting for this one. I will second his motion. All right, Mr. Parrotana made the motion, Mr. Castle seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries five to zero. So unfortunately, Mr. Joe Hogan, our state rep, couldn't be here tonight, but he also has a certificate of achievement that he wanted me to hand deliver to you guys. And the moment we get done signing the proclamation from our board, I am going to hand deliver it to you guys. And we will also break for a few minutes. A lot of family and friends are here tonight. I'm sure the family would love to have the opportunity to take a few photos. We'll break for a few minutes and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would like to make a statement or two, we'd welcome that.
I just want to say that I love coaching.
Step up to the microphone so people at home can hear. There's people watching at home that may not be able to hear.
That's unnecessary, but very nice.
All in, good morning, standing, please. And I can never give you enough hugs. I love this one. My son and my daughter are actually out in the crowd tonight. They love Elaine and Bob. I mean, I'm getting a little choked up by this because they are just such terrific, terrific people. My kids wanted to see this tonight, so.
That's really nice.
I can't thank you guys enough, I mean, honest.
Thanks, baby.
On behalf of the township and the Board of Supervisors and from Joe Hogan and Bob, I am not going to give these to you, if you're going to go.
Well, thanks as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Say one thing?
Sure.
When Elaine and I started coaching, we had girls in different ages and gals, and we finally got all together, same age group. We thought this is going to be great, one field, one practice time. End of the first year, we decided that we could not coach together. So two of the girls came with me one year, one one with Elaine, and next year, one one with me and two one with Elaine. That's why we're still married after 41 years. Thank you very much.
I would love to.
I'm going to take a picture of all you guys. Come on, stand up. Come on, Emily, come on, Arista, come on, Amy, come on, Amy, come on. Come up, veggie. Hi.
Everything you guys look.
Yeah. Yeah. You're just calling them up for me. Yeah. You're good to see them.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, Gina.
Hi, I'll take it.
Don't you?
I think they want you in this one.
No, no, I'm taking this one.
You're under a cup.
People are trying.
Thank you.
I love it.
Thank you.
Chris Cleve, 158 Pine Hill Road.
So I've been battling this sign issue for almost a year now. Been very patient with that sign company at 820 Pennsylvania Boulevard. As you guys know, I guess you guys got a letter from the sign company saying that they're not going to dim it any more than what they have. It's still very bright in my windows at night, even during the day. Now, I got to put money out of my own pocket to provide shrubbery or whatever it is to block the light coming in my picture window. When these guys were sitting down at a table with you guys originally, they said that light would not affect anybody on, you know, you know, swirling the bobble or whatever they did. And it's clearly affecting me, my family, and my neighbors still. I think they basically lied to you guys. And that's who we're dealing with in our township. So if there's anything you guys can do for me and my family, our neighbors, I know they said they dimmed it, but I mean, yeah, somebody turned down their radio a little bit, and it's good for some people, but it's not good for some people. You know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleve, thank you. Anybody else tonight for public comment?
Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Line item one, A, approval of minutes, February 14, 2024. B, approval of accounts payable, February 28, 2024. C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, February 28, 2024. D, approval of first and final construction escrow release for Feasterville Realty Associates 100-210 East Street Road in the amount of 181,141.90 cents. Do we have a motion?
Throughout Pennsylvania. Then, what he would learn, he'd bring back to the community and inform the rest of us veteran service organizations about what he learned. Ralph was a great friend. He was a good listener. He loved to have a good conversation and make new connections. He was the biggest veteran advocate I've ever met. He always enjoyed thinking of new ways to connect with veterans and get them involved in veteran service organizations. He felt that would benefit both the individual veteran and the community. It was Ralph's attributes that we would like to start a yearly scholarship award for upper-class men attending the Chaminde, Ben Salem, or Council Rock High School. This scholarship would be awarded to applicants who have shown a desire to improve their community by volunteering for a cause and building on their work. Over the years, the VAC has supported many struggling organizations with funds to help them get to a better place. Today, we take pride in seeing many of those organizations thriving. We'd like to announce that this scholarship would be in his name. We will always remember Ralph for what he did to this community and for the gifts he gave us. I'd like to say, rest in peace, Ralph. We will miss you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Have a good evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Green. We appreciate everything Ralph has done for our community, you, and everybody on the VAC. And in regards to this Veterans Expo, too, please have somebody reach out to me and, you know, help you guys out again like I've been doing the past few years.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment this evening?
Hi, my name's Glenn Stevens. I'm at 345 East Myrtle Avenue. First, a public safety service announcement. For anybody who's walking their dogs or their kids are walking home, the pit bulls at 349 East Myrtle are still roaming loose without any supervision and no leashes most times or quite often, so be careful out there. First, I'd like to ask you guys a question. Are you all elected officials?
Yes.
Yes?
With the exception of Mr. Hunt.
So the solicitor is not. When you were elected, did you take some kind of an oath in office? Put your hand on a Bible, stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. And in that oath, was there something about the Constitution to uphold the Constitution in it?
Mr. Stevens...
I'm just trying to get to...
I know exactly where you're going with this saying.
Well, you're not pleading to fit like Mike, are you? I'll be real quick. I just want to... I just want to... I last... Like, two weeks ago, I read this... I read this statement. "We, the people, have the right to equal and unbiased representation from our elected officials." Do you believe that statement to be true? Yes?
Mr. Stevens...
You do believe that statement to be true? All these people are created equal. All the residents here should be created... Should be treated equally and without bias.
One name is God. Absolutely.
Yes. So, where was I? I didn't think this was going to be this difficult. Do you expect and demand the same impartiality from your employees?
Mr. Stevens, I'm not going to go back and forth with you.
This is not a question...
Just read your statement, please, sir.
Do you expect that from your employees? Do you expect everyone here to be unbiased?
Listen, Mr. Stevens, with all due respect, we understand your concerns. We get it.
And are my concerns the bias that's been shown to me?
We've been down this road with you numerous times already. We can't do anything else than what we've done, than what we've already done. This is a civil matter at this point.
What you can do is that you expect everybody here to be unbiased, from our police to our zoning officials? Are they... Should they be unbiased?
And what Mr. Dylan has recommended and what I'll recommend to you now, too, please get a survey. Get a survey of the property, Mr. Stevens, and then we can go from there. If you are not willing to get a survey, we can't do anything else to you right now.
You realize I don't care about the survey?
Obviously, you don't. Maybe you should.
No, what I wanted was Mr. Italia to one, and it was to get a survey, because if I got the survey, I would have known what was in the mix. I would have much rather him just walk the 15 steps to me and take five minutes. Here's another statement from an email Mike Italia sent to me. "I spoke to him at length on Friday night and visually looked at the pins." How could he be there Friday night and speak to him at length? I spoke to him at length and not spare me five minutes. Is that unbiased? Is that unbiased, what he did?
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir. I'll grant you another...
The last guy had five minutes.
So, once again, I just said I'd give you another minute.
If we could just blow through these obvious questions, these are rhetorical. Is that unbiased? I'm asking you, is that unbiased?
I have no...
If he would have a lengthy conversation with my neighbor and not spare me five minutes?
Mr. Stevens, I am not going to go back and forth with you tonight with this. We've been down this road before numerous times.
I just wanted to blow through these preliminaries. Mike, can you tell me why you would have a lengthy conversation with my neighbor?
Mr. Stevens, you best to address the board.
That's not right, sir. Do you remember, two weeks ago, the two people who spoke before me were both encouraged to ask Mike Italia questions? And Mike Italia even answered them. Why are you telling me to only address the board? With other people, how can you be so biased to me?
Mr. Stevens, unfortunately, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Can you at least answer me that? Why are you... Why were other people allowed to ask... Were encouraged to ask Mike Italia questions, yet you censor me? Is this Russian disinformation?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. Moving on with public comment. Anybody else tonight for public comment?
You people are unbelievable. Can I just address one other thing? There was a gentleman after I spoke last week who came up and said he was scared. Fear is why I come here every other week. I am afraid of that Mike Italia is giving orders to the law officers, and law officers are obeying orders given by Mike Italia, a zoning official.
All right, Mr. Stevenson...
I am also afraid...
Mr. Stevenson, your time is up. We've ran you now over five minutes.
The last guy had like seven.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Hello, how are you? Good, very good. Nice to see you.
Darlene Hawes, 1170 Ridge Road, Langhorne. I just wanted to say I appreciate your thought and concerns with the federal housing that you decided against it. It wasn't right for our community, and I really appreciate you taking the time and aligning it and going the right way.
We thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We appreciate it. Anybody else in the crowd tonight? Seeing none, Mr... I was going to ask Mr. Gallo if anything was emailed in, but... Absolutely.
Chris Klee, 158 Pine Hill Road. So I've been battling this sign issue for almost a year now. Been very patient with that sign company at 820 Pennsylvania Boulevard. As you guys know, I guess you guys got a letter from the sign company saying that they're not going to dim it any more than what they have. It's still very bright in my windows at night, even during the day. Now, I got to put money out of my own pocket to provide shrubbery or whatever it is to block the light coming in my picture window. When these guys were sitting down at a table with you guys originally, they said that light would not affect anybody, you know, swirling the bob or whatever they did, and it's clearly affecting me, my family, and my neighbors still. I think they basically lied to you guys, and that's who we're dealing with in our township. So, if there's anything you guys can do for me and my family, our neighbors, I know they said they dimmed it, but, I mean, yeah, somebody turned down their radio a little bit, and it's good for some people, but it's not good for some people. You know, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klee. Thank you. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Line item one, A, approval of minutes, February 14, 2024; B, approval of accounts payable, February 28, 2024; C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, February 28, 2024; D, approval of first and final construction escrow release for Feasterville Realty Associates 100-210 East Street Road in the amount of $181,141.90. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda for today's date, February 28, 2024, items A through D.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for the floor. Very good. All right. Line item two, resignation of Supervisor Susan Cummings. As we know, and whoever was watching or here at the previous meeting, Mrs. Cummings has retired, has sold her home, and she has moved away. We will miss Mrs. Cummings, but at this point, we have to put a motion on the floor to accept Mrs. Cummings' resignation. So, I will go through the motion first. After the motion passes, then I will announce how interested parties could submit for the vacancy. So, the motion would read, "To accept resignation of Supervisor Susan Cummings." Do we have a motion?
Unfortunately, we have to accept it. Mr. Chairman, I reluctantly make the motion that we accept Susan Cummings' resignation.
I understand. So we have a motion by Mr. Castle. Do we have a second, gentlemen?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none... Oh, excuse me. This will be effective February 28, 2024. So, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for floor. And as I had stated, that any interested parties, please submit a letter of interest to the township. You could do this one of three different ways. You could drop off a letter of interest in person. You could email it in to the township, or you could also do it the old-fashioned way and throw it in the mailbox. So if anybody's interested, we will have the... We will have the resumes being accepted until March 13, close of business day. At that time, Mr. Gallo will make copies for the board members. The board members will review the resumes, and at our March 27 meeting, we will bring applicants in during our workshop interview, and then we will appoint at the very beginning of the board meeting. The Honorable Judge Baranowski will be here for the appointment, and that's how the process has been going. We try to keep this very transparent and open to the public. We go above and beyond what we have to do, and we've found that this works very well for us. So, please, if anybody's interested, throw your letters of intent into the township. And it'll be advertised on the township website, too. Yes, Mr. Chris Santas?
Frank Chris Santas, 316 Lane. Just curious on the process of the term... The chief... The person who fills out the term till, I guess, November of '25?
From what Mr. Dylan had said, so I'll throw it on him if he was wrong, but I do believe Mr. Dylan had said that, yes, she would... Whoever should be the lucky or unlucky person, depending on how you want to look at it, would fill the vacancy of her term. Was it of '25? I'm not 100% positive, but it's the remainder of her term.
Okay. That's all.
All right, great. Thank you very much. All right. Line item three, consider approval for the use of Russell Elliott Memorial Park for the Community Day First Responders' Day. As it was brought up last time in our meeting, this is a spinoff of the Back to Blue Run that the township has been doing for the past, I guess this would be the fourth year. We've decided to rebrand this a little bit. We are now going to recognize, as we did last year, which was a terrific event, of our first responders. And I would hope the board would approve the use of the field that day. So the motion would read, "To consider the approval... Approve the use of the Russell Elliott Memorial Park for Community Day First Responders' Day, September 22, 2024, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m." Do we have a motion on that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for that. Line item four, consider approval for the Veterans Advisory Council use of Russell Elliott Memorial Park for the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. Well, so, since Mr. Gallo was not here earlier this evening, we had a gentleman from the VAC, Mr. John Green, their chair, and every year, over in the area of Russell Elliott, throughout that whole area, we put on an event that basically is a run. Mr. Perrotto, you're probably... You're back in that area.
Runs...
Runs, right. So, unfortunately, you know...
We'll see when it's open after it's open.
So, with that said, I mean, I imagine probably most of us here are familiar with the run, but the motion would read, "To authorize the Veterans Advisory Council use of Russell Elliott Memorial Park and the surrounding neighborhood on September 14, 2024, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for the Travis Mannion Heroes Run." Do we have a motion for that? I'll make the motion for that. Do we have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries... Motion carries for all. We just had a recommendation from one of our board members since Mr. Gallo had to step out. Maybe we should take a recess for a few minutes, because we will be coming quickly to the personnel department and manager's report, which is something that we just can't do without Mr. Gallo. So if the public...
You need to announce weeks past that motion. You didn't say that yet.
No, I apologize. In regards to the, let's see, line item number six, the Travis Mannion Heroes Run, that motion was passed. Thank you. All right. At this point, we'll break for a few minutes to allow Mr. Gallo a little time to come back in. All righty. All right. Mr. Gallo is back. Everything okay, Mr. Gallo, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we will be moving on to line item number five at this point. Yes. We will resume the meeting, moving on to line item number five. Consider adoption resolution 2024-12 authorizing the submittal of the traffic signal maintenance agreement with PennDOT. Mr. Everett, sir, if you could handle that one?
I'll take it, Joe. I'll take care of that for you. Sorry about that. As far as our traffic engineer has requested that we go through this process. Prior to 2020, individual traffic signals had their own specific maintenance agreements. PennDOT simplified the process. Now the coverage is under this single TSMA, which is the Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement. The township has not had any projects since 2020 that required any modifications. So due to us wanting to permit the flashing LED signs that we have currently through PennDOT, we need to have this approved, since we need an agreement number and effective date as part of that permit application. So we will be looking for approval on that, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right then. So the motion would read, "To adopt resolution 2024-12 authorizing the submittal of a traffic signal maintenance agreement with PennDOT." Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-12 authorizing the submittal of a traffic signal maintenance agreement with PennDOT.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number six, consider authorization of Begley, Carlin, and Mando to represent the township at the Court of Common, please, for 1142 Clayton Avenue. Mr. Hunt, sir, if you wouldn't mind chiming in on that?
Make the motion, or do you want me to...
Yeah, if you'd just please just explain it to the public, please.
All right. There's been a notice of violation. This is a summary appeal hearing in front of the Court of Common, please, through the District Attorney's Office. We would be there in representation of the township. The township issued violations on a homeowner for property maintenance, traffic and vehicle, high grass and weeds, health and safety issues. This has been a... They've been warned multiple times. So violations were issued, and at this point, the homeowner has to appear in court to... On a summary appeal before the judge. We will be representing the township and the township's interests in enforcing the violation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Talia. Anything else like that, or...
No.
Okay.
I may add one question. How... Do you know how many times we've been out there? I mean, how long's this been going on for? I'm just curious about the background.
Long time. Actually, it's been, according to the neighbor, by going over 20 years, they've been using her property. It's now becoming a property dispute as well. They basically have seized her property and is refusing to move his vehicles off her property, which is what started this. So, he's appealing that, and he's probably going to be in a lot line dispute civilly, which I don't know if he understands that or not, but he's basically flat-out refusing to move his vehicles. We actually have another hearing scheduled for district court before the summary appeal for the same violations, because he's just basically not complying at all. So he is appealing the judgment of his fine from the first hearing, which was last month, and then now we're going back in front of Judge Baranowski, so it's probably going to get all lumped together, but the resident's refusing to comply with pretty much everything at this point.
So, we're suing the offender, not the person...
We're not suing anyone.
Not suing, I'm sorry. We... We...
Issued violations?
Thank you. Issued violations to the offender, not the persons whose property it is.
Correct. It's morphed into defending the neighbor now, too, because he's taken over her entire side yard, because he said it's his rights after 21 years, so that's the way his opinion is. So...
So, but the person offending the other person's property is the one that we've taken action against, and...
Correct.
Right, okay. So at this point, we're only pursuing the violations that we took against the person. The lot line issue, that's him and the neighbor have to sort that out.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. So the motion would read, "To authorize Begley, Carlin, and Mando to represent the township at the Court of Common, please, for 1142 Clayton Avenue." Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number seven, consider approval request for dispersment for the capital acquisition account for Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad for capital asset. Mr. Gallo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Tri-Hampton Rescue reached out to us. You were provided documentation as far as what the actual asset is, as well as their requests. They're looking to procure what is called a Medstat 500, which is an off-road ambulance from a vendor with the name of ASAP. I believe they're based out of Ohio, off the top of my head. As part of the 2024 budget, there was an allocation for $30,000, so they will be looking for a check to be released for, in the amount of $30,000, with the board's approval.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So the motion would read, "To approve the request for the dispersment for the capital acquisition account for Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad for the capital asset," which would be a UTV ambulance at a dispersment cost of $30,000. Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number eight, personnel. Mr. Gallo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. At our last meeting, there was the approval for percentage increases for township administration staff to receive respective raises. One component was missing. Typically, we go back and make it retroactive, make it to 1-1. We accidentally left that off as a component, so we will be asking for the board, with their approval, to make it retroactive, basically back to 1-1-24. And again, this is all budgeted item in the 2024 budget.
All right. So, do we have a motion, as stated by Mr. Gallo, or Township Manager? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. We did discuss this during the meeting. It just wasn't codified. So we're just going to cure the...
Yep.
What we did earlier.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Thank you very much. Mr. Gallo, what do I got you, sir? Manager's report?
Yep. Just briefly, again, Township Cleanup Day, Saturday, 4/20, April 20, starting at 9:00 a.m. Walt's office is looking for volunteers. Take a call, 215-357-7300, extension 318, and ask for Danielle. So Walt's going to need some volunteers for that respective day. Sanitation rebate, again, started running from February 8 through May 31. Currently, 350 rebates have been issued, 17,500 rebates back to the residents of the... You know, the residents. Again, you have the criteria typically. The tax has to be paid in full by 12/31/23, and that has to be your primary residence, and you have to be 65 years old by 12/31/23. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gallos. Moving on to supervisor comments. Mr. Ottinger, sir? Nothing tonight. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Yes, I just want to, again, extend my sincere thanks and gratitude to the Stern family. My daughter went through the program from when she was four years old, all the way up until she was, I think, 16 or 17, and they are just great people. They've given so much to this community, and I just wanted to let them know how much I appreciate them and what they've done, not only for my family, but all the families here in Lower Southampton over the last 30 years. Secondly, Mr. Clay, is that your name? Yeah, yeah. I read that email. I would like to talk to you after the meeting and see if there's anything else we can do for you, but I do have concern for what you've been going through, so thank you.
All righty then. Mr. Castle, sir, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I want to thank all the residents who are here tonight in person or viewing at home. We're here to serve you, obviously. We can't make everybody happy, but we do want to listen to you, and we want to take the time to hear your concerns and your complaints. Please sign up for emails from the township, lowersouthampton township dot org. There's, once a week or the other week, you get an email, and that's where a lot of the[1738.25] There's, once a week or the other week, you get an email, and that's where a lot of the information is disseminated. A lot of people ask questions, you know, when did this happen, when did that occur? Well, it was announced for weeks and weeks on the email, so please sign up for that. And finally, Mr. Chairman. Our community recently suffered a great loss on February 15 with the passing of a well-loved resident from Trivus. Known to his friends and coworkers alike, his name is Hank, Hank Armitt. He lived a life of service to others. He never asked for anything in return for his time and his hard work. Hank set the bar for what it meant to be the fabric of a community. There's not one firefighter or squad member in Lower Southampton Township or Ben Salem Township who did not know Hank, nor did anyone ever have a bad word to say about his life of service, his family, or his leadership. Hank served this community for 70 years. He was a fire chief officer, he was a company trustee, he was a fire police captain, and he was a friend to everyone. When too old to fight fires, he drove the fire company food wagon to emergencies all over Bucks and Montgomery County. Sadly, Hank lost his wife Jenny of 59 years in October of 2023. Hank retired from Eastern State Hospital as a ground supervisor when Eastern State closed, and then worked as a park ranger for Ben Salem Township. He was known as a town historian for all things Trivus. To honor his selfless service to others, Hank does not need a last name. His spirit lives in the volunteers of our community who answer the call at 3:00 a.m. for help. Those who volunteered to direct traffic in freezing weather at an accident scene, or those who rush into a burning house to save lives while others are rushing out. Hank's spirit must not die. No one needs to be honored. Otherwise, we all suffer the painful loss of what is a community. We will lose a spirit of freedom, the spirit of a worthy cause, the spirit of helping others. When that happens, then it just becomes a job. And today, people quit jobs after a few hours, after a few days, a few weeks, and if you're lucky, a few years. Our friend Hank was laid to rest yesterday in a humble grave in Langhorne with his wife, passing beneath the banner of our American flag one final time. My prayer to his boys, Michael and Patrick, and our community is that we never forget the Hanks, we never forget the Elanes, we never forget the Bobs, nor the values that they share with everyone. And Hank did it for 87 years. May God grant him eternal peace.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. That was beautiful, well, well spoken. At this time, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.